People who are not from Philadelphia, I'm going to teach you a true Philadelphia welcome.
Uh oh.
So just repeat after me. There it is. Go Birds!
Go Birds!
Nobody here is from Kansas City this year? Good. So, if you've never been to EdiCon before, this weekend is intentionally chosen. Because, you know, nothing says learning like, you know, winter in Philadelphia. But, more importantly, Philadelphia, nothing happens in Philadelphia while the Eagles are playing. Twenty years ago, when we started SLA, I'm from the Philly area, but I was living in New York City, and I had to explain to my wife that New York, you can be, you can kind of completely ignore sports in New York City. There's a vibrant, there's whole swaths of people who don't care for them. That is not true in Philadelphia. And I had to explain to my wife that you don't have to even watch the football game to know what's happening. You just have to leave your window open. And sure enough, the first kind of beautiful fall day, the Eagles were on, I've got the windows open in the house, and I'm watching the game, and she's not a fan, so, she's not a football fan, so, she's not watching. And the Eagles score, and you hear the neighborhood erupt in cheers. And she comes downstairs, and is like, "Where the hell did you lose me?" Go Birds! So, EdiCon was chosen, we've actually always, we've only had to move the weekend of EdiCon once. And that was when the NFL moved from a 16-week season to a 17-week season. Because EdiCon has always historically been the weekend in between the conference playoffs and the Super Bowl, because hope springs eternal. And this year is now yet another year where it paid off, and the Eagles are in the Super Bowl, and EdiCon is happening, and we all still get to take part, and then next week we get to go crazy. So... Woo, woo, woo! Um... Why this still matters. And for those folks, just out of curiosity, how many people here is this their first EdiCon? Awesome! Welcome! We're thrilled to have you. How many people here this is their, they have been here, this is not just their second, this is their third or more? How many folks this is their 10th or more? A couple, right? So, I want to give the context for why we're all here. So, in the summer of 2007, after the first year that SLA was founded, Marcy Hall and I, Marcy's over there, Marcy Hall and I went to ISTI, the International Society of Technology Education Conference. And before that conference, there was an unconference of a bunch of bloggers, and edu, like edu bloggers, in these sort of early days of social media and blogging. And we had an unconference. And it was this great day where we talked about pedagogy and ideas, and how tech made that different and better, but more importantly, pedagogy and ideas, and not just stuff. And at the end of the day, Will Richardson, who, if those folks remember him, was one of the early EdTech evangelists, said, "Could we do this without ISTI? Would people come together and spend a weekend talking about big ideas in education if it wasn't attached to a massive, you know, organization? And could we do it?" And stupidly, I said, "Well, I've got a school, we'll do it." And, you know, and people were like, "Great, when?" And I went, "Ah, well, it's June now, so we'll do it the weekend in between the conference playoffs and the Super Bowl." And I went home, I wrote about it, a bunch of people said it was really great, and I forgot all about it. And then, two months later, a man by the name of John Pedersen said, shoots me an email and says, "I bought a ticket. I bought my plane ticket, can't wait." We're like, "Yes, we're doing this." And that was literally 2008. Right? We hosted our first EdiCon. And we ran the whole thing on my credit card. My wife promised, made me promise that I would lose less than $2,000. And we eventually sold just enough tickets to be able to buy all of our student volunteers pizza on Sunday afternoon. But everybody said, "This is a thing, and we'll come back, and we'll keep coming." And that was the start of this idea that this little school in Philadelphia that believed deeply in the ideas of inquiry and care, and learning by doing and making, and learning through discourse, and the idea that school could be better than what we imagined it to be now, could bring together people from all over the country and even all over the world to spend three days talking to one another, and learning with each other. And that's the context for what we have done now for, this is about 17 years, 16 EdiCons, because there was that pandemic in the middle. But we've shown, I think, and by "we" I mean all of us, have shown that people will come together, that people are excited to talk about what can be and how we can do this better for all of our children. And to me, that's what still powers EdiCon. Is this idea that we can build modern schools that serve everyone, our students and our teachers, better. We're doing it in difficult times, and I am sure, I am quite sure, that how we navigate the time we live will be part of our conversations this weekend. That's okay. We can lean into those conversations. We can do hard things. And I am excited to do that with you. Some, so, that's my, that's my feelings taken to it. Some administrative stuff. One, and SIENDA EdiCon is happening, so if you were one of the speakers who put in a, an ask to do one of the talks, come see me before we start our next session, we'll make sure you know where you're going for lunch. Please make sure you check the schedule. Some of, we did have some cancellations, there's some weather stuff in other parts of the country, people that are done getting here, so there have been some changes to the schedule, please take a look. And then, the other piece of this puzzle is that, again, like I said, there is no EdiCon organization, there are no full-time employees who make this happen. EdiCon is put on by the students and teachers and parents of SLA, the school in which you now sit. And so, I need to make some thank yous. I cannot thank everybody, because we would be here rather than the first session. But the first person I need to thank is our incredible Assistant Principal, Kelly Schaaf. If you're a presenter, you got emails from her. You know, she has, she's the person who got here this morning early to make sure that the coffee was brewed before you all arrived. She does all incredibly work and is my partner in all things EdiCon, as well as all things SLA. The other thing that's special about EdiCon, and it is really run by parents and students. We start meeting in the first week of school, every Monday. After school, we check in and do a plan, and what are we doing, and all the rest of that. And the two most important people, more important than both Kelly and me, are Amalay and Azee, and I don't know where they are. Amalay, Azee, where are you guys? They're probably running around, but they are our student co-chairs. If you see them, say congratulations and thank you. Where are they?
One's right there.
I can't see them, like, behind the, they're right behind the thing. They're already there. The Azee's around somewhere. So, please say thank you to them. And then, also, you will see at the coffee stations, at the desk, in the office, students and parents who have volunteered their time to make this a great weekend for you. So thank you to everybody at SLA who makes this happen, who puts this on for you, and who's excited to share what we do with all of you. So thank you to everybody. The last thing I'm going to do before I cede the stage is I'm going to introduce our welcoming address. Regis Strater, I am thrilled to have here. He is a lawyer, he is an advocate, he is a public servant, he is the Chair of the Philadelphia School Board. Importantly, Philadelphia School Board members are volunteers. It is, if you've ever had the pleasure of going to a school board meeting... I can, I think of myself as being someone who can put up with a lot, or who can handle a lot. I have no interest in ever being a member of the Philadelphia School Board, because they get yelled at a lot, and they do incredible work as volunteers. And they do it because they care. They do it because they too believe that we can make better schools for all of our children here in the city of Philadelphia. And I am honored and thankful that Reggie is going to share some words with all of you to kick off EdiCon. So with that, the Chair of the Board of Education, Reggie Strater. He's also a dad.
Alright, so good morning, everybody. First, I want to give a huge shout-out and a round of applause to Mr. Chris Lehman. I think that, just clap a little, please. It could be a challenge to have to navigate the, the school district of Philadelphia. And I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for your continued commitment to not just innovation for innovation's sake, but innovation intended to move the needle on academic achievement. He's being very patient. Thank you all for being patient. So good morning, everybody. Again, thank you for being here this morning. It is indeed an honor to be here with you today to discuss the present and future of our schools. As a school district, a Philadelphia graduate, president of the Board of Education, and father of two students in the school district, and as you can see, another one on the way, I am always energized by being in rooms with people who are thoughtful and intentional about what and how we teach our students. I bring you greetings from the Philadelphia Board of Education. I have the privilege of working for and with, yes, I work for, as the Board President, with incredible board members who volunteer full-time hours, I hear you, son, in service of our children. I believe Board Member Crystal Covich, an innovator in her own right, is here. Can you please stand? To that, I would like to thank her. Truly a force of nature, I can say so myself, in a good way. Now, if you've seen me at board meetings, as Mr. Lehman just mentioned, or any school district event, you probably already know that the Board's top priority is launching the school district of Philadelphia into the stratosphere via our goals and guardrails. But what does that really mean? For me, and I believe for the Board it means, creating one unified system of public education in Philadelphia that delivers high-quality education for all students. It means ensuring that our children have the foundational skills to thrive, succeed, and lead in a global society. It means making sure they have the tools to realize any future they imagine. So how do we accomplish this? First things first. We often hear the words "education" and "innovation" together, but too often, this is a, this is in reference to new or advancing technologies alone. While technology is important, we must be cautious about implementing innovation without clear educational value. Innovation should never be pursued solely for novelty. It must be intentional, designed to improve student outcomes, and focused on solving real academic challenges, just as Mr. Lehman mentioned earlier. Because that is why we exist, to educate the whole child, equipping them to be full and capable participants in a local, national, and ever-changing global economy and society. Flashy technologies and trendy initiatives often distract from real educational needs. Again, not minimizing those, but as educational leaders, we are responsible for ensuring that every innovation has a tangible impact on student success and does not become a short-lived experiment that fails to move the needle meaningfully. So how do we use innovation to move the needle, y'all? We need to examine the learning experiences of our students that our students are having. The traditional one-size-fits-all education model does not meet the needs of all learners. Indeed, the old Prussian model... Indeed, the old Prussian model of education, designed to produce disciplined, obedient workers and soldiers who would follow orders without question, is old, antiquated, and stifles the beautiful mosaic of children we educate today. That said, we should be focusing on making learning more individualized, engaging, practical, and reflective of real-world experiences. So in what ways can you strategically integrate global happenings into the curriculum so that students can connect classroom concepts to real-world situations? Consider the interests of your students. How can you connect critical skills learned in the classroom to their hobbies or passions? This is where we should be innovating. There are ways we will ensure that students develop the knowledge, skills, and competencies needed to succeed in a rapidly evolving world. When our students graduate, the world they enter will be vastly different from the one previous generation's experience. It's changing right now. We know that that change is constant and globalization and the digital revolution will demand new skills and adaptability. We must use innovation in education to provide students with the tools to pivot as national and global economic landscapes evolve, ensuring they are workforce-ready and capable of leading in the future and having the critical skills necessary to engage a very complex and problematic political world we live in right now. We must remain committed to long-term sustainable changes that enhance learning experiences. We must prioritize evidence-based practices, ensuring that new initiatives are implemented with proper planning, training, and alignment with curriculum goals. But let's not forget the bigger picture. Education has long been a driver of opportunity and investing in the right innovations ensures that education remains a powerful tool for equity, mobility, and social mobility. It can be a, it can be the thing necessary to break through things such as economic apartheid. And I am a living testament to this. I was in housing insecure youth, right here in Philadelphia, who benefited from some of the innovations that the late-grad Dr. Constance D. Clayton put into practice in our comprehensive neighborhood high schools. I'm a graduate of Germantown High School, proud to be. Because of those innovations, I was able to receive a quality education that gave me the tools to succeed. First, in the service industry, I bartended at TGI Fridays, managed restaurants, and did all those things for quite a while. But, but the same tools that allowed me to navigate those spaces and be successful allowed me to return to college where I earned my undergraduate in law degree. He was in one of my classes, he's brought it right here in the front. And ultimately, it allowed me to have the tools to navigate the legal profession as a plaintiff's attorney, where I help people every day as a civil rights attorney. But also I used those same skills and lived experiences on the Philadelphia Board of Education. That education changed the trajectory of my life and it will change more children's lives. The lives of our children and the many others I have touched over the years. Now, this is exemplar. There's nothing special about me than any other childhood city of Philadelphia or anywhere in the country. I believe there's individuals from all over the country and we're all here today. None of this would have been possible without the strong foundation I received right here in the Philadelphia School District. And then, indeed, when we get it right, we address the systemic barriers that prevent students from reaching their full potential. The right innovations, whether in curriculum design, teaching methodologies, technology integration, our student support services can close achievement gaps, and they are right here in Philadelphia. Expand access to quality education and create pathways for all students to succeed, regardless of their backgrounds. By making strategic investments in evidence-based student-centered innovations, we ensure that education continues to be a tool for breaking a cycle of poverty, fostering upward mobility, and empower future generations to shape their own destinies. Graduate of the homeless, though. We must work together as a village and commit to fostering innovations that serve our students, ensuring that they have opportunities, skill sets, and resources to lead successful lives. Innovations must be designed to move the needle in service of student achievement. It's a force multiplier. In closing, the future of education depends on our collective abilities to be intentional, strategic, and forward-thinking about innovation. Let's move forward with purpose, intentionality, so that innovation in public education serves as a tool for meeting lasting change. And I really appreciate you all for listening to my long comments, but I'm blessed to be here and I'm blessed to serve. Thank you so much.
All right, everyone, we've got our marching orders. If you were here last night and you heard the incredible panel talk about all of the ways that we can define and build our community. For those folks who've been here before, welcome back to the Edicon community. For those folks who are here for the first time, welcome. You are now a member of the Edicon community. Let's keep these ideas in the front of everything we do this weekend. And the first session will start. You've got 20 minutes to get some coffee, get some bagels, figure out where you want to go. First session starts at 10 o'clock. Welcome to Edicon, everybody.